Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Let's, we'll go ahead and get started. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, Malani, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Mike Schaefer.
Here.
President Bob Uten.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk, do we have any late communications?
I did not receive any late communications, Mr. President, but I believe that Mr. Carroll did receive communication from the owner. Scott, did you want me to show that at this time or?
Please, yes, no, please share his email to the board.
Okay.
So, do you want me to take this, Ellen, or do you wanna, you wanna share that with the board?
Oh, reschedule.
Yes. So I received this email from the owner at four fifteen yesterday. Wants to reschedule the meeting. He does not give a specific reason other than he has other priorities in our, than our board. Um, I did email him back. If you want to see my email responding back to him, I did, I did tell the owner that I do not have the authority to continue. That's up to the board. Make your decisions today if you want to continue it. But again, I think I can have District, uh, Council Burns can, can go into detail. He does not give explicit details like he needed more time to for defense or nothing like that. It just sounds like he doesn't have time for us. So, um, again, it's, I think it's up to you if you want to continue it or not.
Yes, Helen. Yes, Mr. President, uh, the board does have certain discretion as to whether to grant a continuance, and that is what this would in effect be. Uh, we did not feel as though we had the authority based on the lateness of this communication and the lack of specificity to make the judgment to simply continue what we thought would, the board should make that determination. And our concern was that we received it so late and then, um, it, the wording, uh, it must be continued to a future date as a work-related incident has taken my priority. And he doesn't say whether he had to buy a box of pencils at Staples or he had to sign a million dollar deal. So, that's what's before you and, um, it's really up to you whether you grant this continuance, um, to another date.
Bob, this, Mike, this is Mike. May I ask a procedural question at this point? Is that allowed?
Certainly.
Certainly.
If, if we, in order to grant this continuance, don't we need to get into the item this morning? Or we can't, we can't, can't grant the continuance through, uh, this part of the agenda. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. Uh, you'd have to go through public comments first and then, uh, get, get to the matter. So this is, you're correct. This is just simply, uh, advising you that we did receive a late communication. So it would be appropriate to have public comments first in case a member of the public wanted to, uh, have input on this.
And then we would open the agenda item to get into discussion and then we'll make our decision at that point.
Yes, that would be the appropriate sequence.
Great. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Hey, um, then then we'll move on to public comments. Uh, Jim Moser, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes, thank you, President Uten. If you're wanting public comment, I would deny the continuance. Because I noticed he not only does not explain why he wants a continuance, he did not specify or suggest any date would be acceptable to him. So if you grant a continuance, you likely would just have a continuation of the same kind of behavior in the future. Thank you.
Uh, any other public comments? Malani, do you see any hands raised or?
No, Mr. President, no further public comment.
Okay, then we'll go on to, uh, our public hearing. Um, this is the public hearing to determine whether the owner or others are responsible for sewer system overflows at eighteen twenty-six Pomona Avenue, Costa Mesa. Whether the owner should have been allowed to abate the spill and whether the costs of abatement were reasonable. Um, do I go on, Alan, then?
No, I think that's appropriate for, um, you to consider whether or not to grant the continuance. You might just mention that we now have before us a request for continuance on this matter.
Okay, with, with the request for continuance in front of us, so what is the board's pleasure?
Bob, this is Mike. Um, I, I, I'm inclined to deny the continuance based on the history of the way they applicant or I'll call him the applicant because I'm not sure what else other term to use. But going through the exhibits and the things that have been presented by staff, um, this landowner has continued to, uh, postpone things. There's a, there's a pattern of not returning, uh, com- uh, comments and things to our general manager. And this has been really an ongoing process that that, that the applicant has continued to delay. So if we're looking for any kind of action, I, I'm in favor and I'll move that we deny the continuance.
Do any of the other directors, do I have a second to that motion?
Uh, Mr. President, I'll second with comment.
Go ahead, Director.
Yeah, so, um, I agree with, uh, Vice President Schaefer. Um, and I'm seconding the motion for those reasons, but also I'll put on my, uh, law and order hat in, in, in a courtroom. Uh, you have continuances, but there's gotta be a reason for a continuance. There's gotta be, hey, we need more time to talk to our witness. We need more time. We discovered some new evidence late last night. That, if, if that email yesterday afternoon would have said, hey, I need another week to, uh, present blah, 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 then I would be way more willing and to send us something at four o'clock has, uh, the day before has no, uh, you know, no interest in our time either. So I would vote to deny, or I would vote to not have the continuance.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Arlene.
Yeah, before, this is under discussion. I would just like to add to it that I hope in the motion we say that we did not receive this letter from him saying he could not be present at, at four fifteen the day before. That is unacceptable. Thank you.
And any other directors, uh, need, need to discuss this item? Well, then let's, let's have a vote. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, then we'll continue on with the public hearing. Okay, item number two, um, hearing regarding the charges for the sewer spill at eighteen twenty-six Pomona Avenue, Costa Mesa. Uh, I'm the president of the board. I will now call this meeting to order. This is a hearing to determine if the owner, Mr. Peter Bedford, is responsible for the charges for sewer spill at eighteen twenty Pomona Avenue, Costa Mesa, California. Apparently a sewer spill occurred at that location, but the property, but the owner or other person may be interested in contesting whether the private owner caused the spill by poor lateral maintenance or whether the district or some other person is responsible. Uh, we're also, we are also to consider the cost of the abatement. Hearing is being conducted pursuant to Costa Mesa Sanitary District Operations Code, specifically Section six point oh two point oh one oh, making private owners responsible to maintain their laterals in good working condition and Chapter six point one zero, providing airing process for persons to contest staff's determination about responsibility and the charges. Hearing is being conducted before the Boards of Directors and I am the presiding officer. District Council Mr. Burns will assist in the procedural matters and in preparing the decision. Mr. Carroll will be presenting staff's case, Mr. Bedford, the property owner, uh, and and will be challenging staff's determinations. The board has not been involved in this dispute, so it can provide due process. The procedure for the hearing will be that the staff will present his case first, followed by the property owner. We assume that each side has been provided the other's materials in advance of the hearing. Each side will be allowed to have a limited right to ask questions of the other side. But this will not be a trial with full cross-examination rights. Mr. Carroll, are you presented, are you prepared to proceed with staff's case?
Yes, I am, Mr. President.
And please include any notices you provide to the owner as part of your case. Also, we will not, we'll not only want to hear about the cause of this spill, but the cost of the abatement. Mr. Carroll, you have the burden of proof, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Malani, I have a PowerPoint presentation. If you can allow me to share my, my screen.
Sure.
And, Mr. President, let's make the, all of the documents that were submitted in the agenda packet part of the administrative record in this matter.
Thank you.
Okay, try that, Scott.
I, I don't know if, can anyone see this? I don't know if anyone can see this.
No.
Not yet.
To this. Try it again, Scott.
Okay. Yep, I see it. There we go. Okay. All right. So, okay, everyone can see that, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. President and good morning, Board of Directors. Uh, again, Scott Carroll, General Manager, Costa Mesa Sanitary District, presenting our case regarding the SSOs at, uh, eighteen twenty-six Pumona Avenue. Eighteen twenty-six Pomona Avenue is a small apartment complex that consists of seven units. Uh, it's really hard to find if you're driving down Pomona because it's right here, um, behind, um, eighteen twenty-eight and eighteen thirty-four Pomona Avenue. To access this property, you have to go down this long driveway down here, uh, to, to access the property. Um, and you'll see that the property, you'll see next to the property or this driveway, sir, go back, is sloped. So that's why they need a private pump station, which is located right here on the property. And so that pump, pump station will, will pump, uh, wastewater up the slope on the driveway into our main line on, on Pomona Avenue. This is what the, the driveway looks. If you're standing on Pomona, as you see, it's kind of sloped upwards. So this is on the left, uh, looking down. And then this is one of two cleanouts. Uh, this one's closest, uh, to, um, this one's closest to Pomona, um, Avenue. There's another one farther down the driveway, which I'll share with, show with you in, in a few minutes. This is the nearest manhole cover, which is about seventy-five feet, uh, east of the driveway. This is the pump station, um, on the property, and this picture was taken by me on April thirtieth. Uh, and I will go in more details on, on my meeting with, with the property owner. So the two twenty, the two thousand twenty-one sewer spills, SSOs, were not the first SSOs on this property. On June seventeen, two thousand fifteen, the property experienced an SSO. And, and as you can see on the picture left, this is the second cleanout I was mentioning earlier where the sewer water came out. And on the other picture on the right, that's our crews responding to the SSO.
Scott, are these from two thousand fifteen or is these the more recent ones?
This is two thousand, it's on the screen here. You can see it's ju- June seventeen, two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
Um, and this is, uh, you can see the spill all the way back to the other property where staff, um, dammed up the sewer spill and, and then this is the, uh, picture of the, uh, of the pump. Now, this is a diagram from staff. Uh, I think it's a very good diagram of what happened on, on the fifteenth and what we believe. So here's the pump, here's the seven units. This is the pump. Here's the driveway, the two cleanouts. Uh, we believe there was a blockage somewhere here in, in, on the right away. And even though the, the sidewalk in the street is public right of way, Section six point zero two point zero two zero of the district's operations code indicates the property owner shall maintain the lateral that connects to the district sewer main, including any portion that may lie within public right of way or seem as the easement. Uh, staff, as I mentioned earlier, staff believes there's an offset in the lateral that require the property owner to CCTV his lateral in accordance with Section six point zero three point zero two zero subsection D, which states property owners shall be required to cause an inspection of their sewer lateral prepared by a licensed plumber in utilizing CCTV whenever an SSO occurs at the property. The property owner refused to CCTV the lateral and he refused to reimburse district for costs related to relieving the blockage because he believes the district caused the SSO. Now, on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, the district after-hours contractor, C N R Drains, responded to an SSO at eighteen twenty-six Pomona Avenue. C N R Drains technician observed water coming out of the cleanout in the driveway. The technician checked the district's main line in the street and noticed it was flowing properly. He did not observe water holding in the main line. So the technician ran a jetter in the ladder for about a hundred fifty feet to clear the blockage. That was on October twenty-fifth. Now, a couple of days later, on October twenty-seventh, the owner contacted C N R Drains to indicate his complex is backing up again. When C N R Drains arrived, the technician noticed the water in the main line was flowing properly, but the six-inch cleanout near the sidewalk was holding water. When the private pump on the property was activated, the, the technician observed water was coming up in the six-inch cleanout. C N R, C N R Drains technician advised the owner that the stoppage is on his property and it's his responsibility to relieve the blockage. The owner approves C N R Drains to snake the lateral. And as you see in this picture, this is the, the snake, uh, into the, the cleanout. Now, while snaking the private sewer lateral, the, the technician hit obstruction approximately twenty feet before the district main line, which is very similar to what happened in the two thousand fifteen sewer spill. The technician was pulling out from the cleanout balls of wipes and toilet paper, as you can see in this picture. And then the technician was pulling out debris that appears to be pieces of T-shirt or a large rag, as you can see in the, in these next slides here. You can see the, the, the large rags here. Here's a picture of all he pulled out, um, from, from the lateral. So after the debris was removed, the latter was clear obstruction and flowing again. C N R Drains technician recommends CCTV the lateral because the cleanout was holding water, which is not normal. The technician also checked the private sewer pump on the property and observed the pumps were properly operating. Now, on March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, the Finance Department mailed the first notice to the property owner. Uh, and that was for recovering cost of the February twenty-fifth and February twenty-seventh, two, two thousand twenty-one spill, as well as the June seventeen, two thousand fifteen spill. A total of over twenty-three hundred dollars. The next day, on March twenty-sixth, the Engineering Department mailed a letter requesting video recording submitted on the condition of the sewer level, as I indicated before that there is, uh, uh, our, our operations codes that requires such video when the, when a SSO occurs on private property. Soon after receiving the, the letter from Finance and from the Engineering Department on April sixth, the, the property owner did contact our district engineer, Mark Esker. The property owner told Mr. Esker that, uh, he's refusing to video record his sewer lateral because he believes the debris from the main line backed up into his lateral causing SSO. And he also believed that C N R Drains did not properly perform the work on February twenty-fifth, which caused the sewer spill on the twenty-seventh. He also made threatening remarks to, uh, Mr. Mr. Esker, saying that if, you know, we place his, these charges on his property tax roll, he's going to sue us based on principle. And he demanded to speak to me. So after I received this information from Mark Esker, I did call, um, the property owner on April eighth. Um, I did inform him that I will rate, waive the cost from the two thousand fifteen SSO because it was nearly six years ago. The owner believes he does not owe anything to the district because he believes the sewer spill was not his fault. So then I emailed the following pictures to him taken by C N R Drains on February twenty-seventh. So these, these are pictures from C N R Drains on, on February twenty-seventh. This is the pump station. You see those rags around the station. And again, these are pictures you've already seen that were submitted by, um, um, technician. This was, this is the cleanout and you can see it's holding water. Okay, so after, uh, receiving the pictures, the, the owner suggested I visit the property to see for myself the pump and what occurred on February twenty-seventh. I accepted the owner's invitation and scheduled a meet and greet on April thirtieth. Prior to April thirtieth, on April twenty-seventh, the Finance Department mailed a second notice to Mr. Bedford that did not include the cost recovery for the June seventeenth, two thousand fifteen SSO. So on April thirtieth, I did arrive on the property. I, I visited with the property owner and I met his property manager. Um, this is the picture of the, uh, pump station on, on April thirtieth that I took. Uh, the property owner also submitted these pictures that you saw earlier. Those were pictures from the property. He did give those pictures to me. Um, he also, uh, informed me that, um, his proper, his property manager ha- has up to date and accurate pump station maintenance records. And he recorded C N R Drains snaking the ladder and moving debris. When he told me that, I, I requested a copy of the pump station maintenance record and a video recording that he said he would supply to me. Unfortunately, to, to, to date, he has not handed me any records of their pump stations or the video that he said he recorded, uh, from C N R, on C N R Drains. So a few days passed since my meeting on, on April thirtieth and on May third, I emailed, uh, the owner to remind him to send me the pump station maintenance records and video recording of the SSO on February twenty-seventh. As I mentioned, to date, I have not received any maintenance records or the video from, from the owner. The next day on May fourth, I me- emailed the owner the district's final position regarding the February twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh SSOs. Staff believes the SSO was not caused by the private pump station. The tw- twenty twenty-one SSOs are consistent with the two thousand seven, I'm sorry, with, consistent with the June seventeenth, two thousand fifteen SSO, when obstruction occurred in the street right, right before, uh, the main line. So again, we believe there is, uh, an offset in the lateral somewhere around here in, in, in the right of way. What we believe is occurring is that when the pump station is doing its job, it's shredding up the, the, the wipes in the toilet paper and it's flowing up the lateral. Those wipes and toilet papers are getting snagged or caught in the offset. And over time, it builds up and builds up and causes the sewer spill. We believe that's what caused the, the sewer spill on February twenty-fifth. And so when, and when C N R Drains used a jetter, it cleared it out. On the twenty-seventh, we believe someone flushed down the large rag or T-shirt. And that, again, got shredded by the pump station and got snagged in the offset on the twenty-seventh. And that's what caused the sewer spill on, on the twenty-seventh. So after, um, I emailed, or the, the same day I emailed our position on the sewer spill, I also tested the property owner. And I reminded him to check his, his, his email. Uh, uh, we got our position. You can see, here's my, this is my, my text right here. And then I get a response from soon after, uh, saying that his construction consultant, John Hillman, will conduct a complete evaluation of the cause, including the city of Costa Mesa codes and issues. And he said, the owner informed me that Mr. Hillman will be contacting me with his full investigation, when his full investigation is complete. And to date, I have not received anything from Mr. Hillman. So, uh, a month has went by since that text, or over a month it went by since that text. And, uh, with no communications from Mr. Hillman or from the owner, I authorized the Finance Department to send a third notice to the owner and agreed to waive the interest and penalties fees as a good faith effort of the district's willingness to compromise. And hopefully, it would encourage the owner to pay the charges. A month later, the district did not receive a reply from the owner. So a fourth notice was mailed to me on July eighth for a total of nearly twelve hundred dollars. When we did not receive, uh, any communications after the July eighth, uh, letter, we decided to, uh, schedule a hearing. And according to Chapter six point one zero, the district's operations code gives the district authority to co- for cost recovery. Section six point one zero point zero three zero of the chapter allows the responsible party to receive notice in due process before the district determines to place unpaid charges on the property tax roll. So on July fifteenth to, uh, twenty twenty-one, at approximately four forty PM, a co-occupant residing at the owner's official residency accepted the notice from the district. And on the left is the proof of service. And then on the right is the notice that was attached to that proof. Um, in addition, on July twenty-second, I emailed the owner a copy of the proof of service and notice. Uh, and on the same day, I also texted him requesting he checked his email. Now, on Exhibit sixteen in your staff report, you'll see a copy of the proof of notice, a proof of service, the district notice. There's also an email from district engineer confirming Mr. Bedford's residency. There's also on that exhibit, you'll have a copy of my email from Ju- July twenty-second, a copy of my text from July twenty-second. And then on Sunday, July twenty-fifth, I emailed the owner a draft staff report of what I'm presenting today. So we had that weeks in advance. That concludes my presentation and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Also, um, available for question is Garcia from C N R Drains, who was there on, on February twenty-seventh. Also, Mark Esker, our district engineer is available for questions. And also Steve Connel, our Wishwire Maintenance Superintendent is available for questions.
Mr. President, if I could, uh, ask the, before our manager rests his case, if I could ask him, uh, obviously, the owner contests the charges and wasn't going to hire his own contractor to clean this, but maybe you could put something in the record about the need to clean the sewer spill up, uh, immediately using CRNR and also the fact that the charges were reasonable.
Yes, so thank you. Um, so after, when we respond to private sewer spills, uh, now I do, after we, uh, after our contractor or even staff, uh, relieves the blockage, we are us and the car, or C N R Drains, our contractor, will resolve, we're cleaning up the sewer spill, which C N R Drains did do that. Uh, we have a contract with C N R Drains, uh, what's, uh, their charges, what they charge, uh, for responding to sewer spills, and we believe those are reasonable. Uh, we always give the property owners an opportunity. If they don't, if they don't, if they want to use their own plumbers, we always give them an opportunity to do that. Uh, obviously, as, as I mentioned earlier, um, the owner requested C N R Drains to continue to perform the services. So that's what they did. But we do give them an opportunity to, to use their plumbers if they believe the costs were, were excessive. And in this case, they, they told C N R Drains to proceed.
Scott, in your opinion, is the bill from CRNR reasonable?
Yes, in my opinion, it is reasonable.
Do, do any of the directors have, um, comments or discussions?
I, this, Mike, I have a question for the general manager. Scott, Scott, if you've got control, can you take a look at Exhibit eleven again?
Uh, you can pull that up for me, Malani, Exhibit eleven?
Uh, you have the control.
Oh, okay, so for me.
And why, and why you, Scott, could you, uh, just put in the record that we did in fact pay CRNR's bill?
Yes, we did pay CRNR's bills. Yes, absolutely.
Scott, why, if you can get that. So Exhibit eleven is the picture apparently that you took of the private pump station.
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's, yeah, hang on a second, that's. That's this.
Can you? I mean, I, my eyes are old. Oh, what is all that stuff down at the bottom? It, it looks to me like there was a shoe or something in there.
No, it's, it looks like a bunch of wipes are in, in the system.
Okay. Um, does this indicate that, that pump station is not maintained on a regular basis?
Well, again, I cannot confirm that. I, I cannot confirm that because, uh, uh, I did not see the, the maintenance records. But uh, according to C N R Drains, who did observe it, it, it appears to be working fine. Again, it's not the pump that's causing the sewer spill. We believe there's an offset in the lateral.
Okay, okay, now, now that was to my second question. For my uneducated thinking, what do you mean by an offset?
Well, it means there's like, uh, um, there's a crack in the system, right? And, and it's not, it's not fully flushed in, in, in the main line. So it's, it's that's where the, the, and I hope District Engineer Esker can, can elaborate more for me if I'm not explaining this, uh, correctly, but uh, there's like cracks in the, in the, in the pipes and that's what's the, the, the rags and, and
Okay.
toilet paper to snag it onto.
Okay, so there, there's some abnormality in the light. It's not like the line goes in a different direction or anything like that, right?
Yeah, the joint also could, that's where the offset occurs. The, um, the joints aren't connected anymore and it could be cracked also.
Okay, Steve, thanks, thanks. Um, Scott, my next question, I'm having difficulty. The, the owner is saying that the, the problem is in our line. So that means our, our line, i- if he's So that means our our line, i- if he's correct, our line going down the street had all this debris in it and took a turn and went into his property. Is that right?
That's what he says. That's what he's assessing. Yes.
Scott, Scott.
Is that possible to happen?
Scott, may I take this question?
Yes, I'll I'll turn it over to Mark Esker.
And may I, and may I share my screen?
Yeah, how do I, so I do I stop shared, Nolani?
Yes.
Okay, okay, stop shared. All right.
Hey, hang on just a sec. Give me a, give me a second to move things over and make an adjustment here to my screen. And I'm happy to submit this to Nolani. When we're done.
While you're, while you're doing that, let me ask the next question to Scott, Mark, while you're giving that up. Do you know if the property owner has done anything proactive with his tenants to warn them of possible? We don't, we don't have any idea whether he's done any of that or not.
No, I have no, no, no indication at all.
Okay. All right. And if we could go back to my previous question, Mark, that'd be great.
Okay, Nolani, when I tried to share it, it said that you've denied, you've disabled sharing.
Uh, Scott, if you will make me the host again, please.
How do I do that?
Or you may be able to give it over to to Mark.
How do I do that?
Okay, uh, click on participants.
Yeah.
And then when you click on Mark's name, does it allow you to give him the hosting, right?
It just says invites. Hang on, hang on a second. Let me try again. Okay, okay. Okay. Yes, okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
So do I make him the host?
Yes, make him the host. Yes.
Okay, okay, Mark, try it now.
All right, let's All right, can everybody see my screen now? There's a lady jogging on the beach.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, let's pull up, let me pull up my diagram. Oops, let's see. Okay, I'll try to describe when I had my first discussion, probably first and only discussion with Mr. Bedford. He basically was trying to explain to me that the rag and T-shirt materials came out of our sewer and backed up into his his pipeline. And so we can't take a picture of this in a cross section of the ground. So I just tried to do a sketch of this. But this would be Pomona Street. Our sewer main is about four feet below the street level. And what typically happens in a lateral is the latter, the the customers, I'll say sewer lateral comes in at the top half of our pipeline, usually has a has a bend that then goes at about a one or two percent grade towards the upward towards the house. And the reason it goes upward towards the building is so that sewage rolls downhill or flows downhill. In the case of Mr. Bedford's property, he has a pump station that ties into the private property lateral. And once his pump pumps into this lateral, it goes by gravity into our system. We design our sewer mains so that, see the water line is half, it's typically we design our our sewer pipes so that at peak flow, the water in the sewer is about a half a pipe. So what Mr. Bedford contends is that during high, high flow are the water level went above the pipe and solids from our pipe traveled upward through his pipe and created a stoppage in his pipeline. I was trying to explain to Mr. Bedford that that is very unlikely because, you know, even at high flow, our water level is only a half a pipe section. So any rags, materials, greases, anything that's in our system would have a difficult time traveling up our pipeline. At that point, I will add that Mr. Bedford said that I work for the districts and I'm paid to basically quote lie to 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 you guys. But that being said, I was trying to explain that is it's very unlikely that water from our our system went up his lateral. Now, the reason why Mr. Carol mentioned that when staff arrived at the site and looked at the downstream manhole and they said, quote, water was flowing, if water is flowing in our pipeline, then there is not a stoppage in our system. If there was a stoppage in our system, at that point, yes, water could rise, rise, rise. And and presumably, water could back into Mr. Bedford's lateral. But when we showed up on the site or our plumber showed up on the site and they looked at the manhole, that would indicate that the water level is indeed at half pipe or likely less because they actually saw the water traveling in our sewer. So I guess my point is, based on what I've seen, what I've heard and what I know from a physical perspective, it's very unlikely for rags and materials to go backwards into Mr. Bedford's pipe. I hope that answers your question, Director Schaefer.
Very, very much so, Mark. Thank you.
Do any of the other directors have questions?
Mr. President, I do.
Director Echols.
Just a follow up on that, Mark. You know, it's very unlikely. Have you seen that in your years of experience to have occurred and you know, going backwards and overfilling that, you know, that half level and flowing back into one particular lateral?
Yeah, I have seen sanitary sewer overflow stoppages. And at that point, yes, I have seen the water level behind the stoppage rise to where it comes out on the ground. And when it comes out on the ground, presumably what that could mean is that water could go backwards into the lateral. In this case, again, because the water was flowing freely in our pipeline, physically, that doesn't appear to be a an occur, what occurred in this case.
And that's what I was going to follow up with. So in previous experiences, you would have seen something when you investigated out there that would have said, okay, yeah, this this happened. And in this case, you did not see that, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't believe the plumbers, nor do I believe Steve's crews saw anything that indicated that water backed up from the sanitation, sanitary district sewers into Mr. Bedford's lateral.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mark. A couple of questions, Scott. Has the owner, other than just claiming that it was our issue, have they? I mean, based on the staff report, they haven't sent anything that has any or basically is justifying the owner's position, that it's our issue and not theirs?
They, I mean, have they explained the evidence to support their their argument? None, none whatsoever. They're just going on assumptions.
Got it. And then back in twenty fifteen, that SSO, I I was a little unclear in the report. Why didn't, why didn't we assess a charge back in twenty fifteen initially?
And and I'll take responsibility for that. We just, we just, we we did send them notices and, you know, required them to pay, but we didn't follow up on it, just other pressing issues. And we we dropped the ball, to be honest with you.
Okay, gotcha. And then so then at at this point, I I'm just rounding numbers, but you had sent the last correspondence saying, look, we'll waive the late fees and penalties, all that, and approximately eleven hundred dollars is what the last letter was, correct?
Yeah, eleven, twelve hundred dollars, somewhere around that. Yes, correct.
So now, now today, basically, we're looking at thirteen hundred dollars, give or take, with all the penalties and all that?
Yes, so we we applied the penalties based on from July eighth. So because he did not pay on July eighth, we assessed penalties from the July eighth. Now, I guess this is a question for district council. Can even though can we, can the board still approve applying the two thousand and fifteen charges on there, even though it's six years old? I I don't know. That's a question we we need to ask Alan Burns if we can do that, if the board wants to do that.
Well, and I'll follow up with that. And Alan, so a question then. The twenty fifteen, I've got an opinion on, but and so I'd be curious your answer. But basically, based on the last letter, we've increased that number by a couple of hundred dollars. Is that still? I mean, I'm sure it's legal, but is it, is it kind of flow the process? Or should we really be looking at the the last offer, which was approximately eleven hundred dollars or or whatnot? Do you have an opinion on that, Alan?
Yes, Director Echols. On both, as to both questions, the first is the, as to two thousand and fifteen, the statute of limitations would have expired on that. Basically, you have a three year statute of limitations on an obligation created by statute. So I think that one's gone. But the the charges, although they seem high, the penalties, they are specifically authorized by the Health and Safety Code, and they are valid. And what would happen were you to approve the charges with those penalties is that would be determined in a resolution or other memorialization. And then you're going to see this again one more time before it's placed on the property tax roll. And at that point, we can consider whether or not there's additional interest or anything like that that would be added to that. Certainly, when it goes on the tax roll, it starts accruing interest there until they collect it.
And then last question, Alan, or if if our board decided, okay, well, the last offer was, again, just say eleven hundred dollars. We could vote to assess that and not necessarily place on these additional fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Do any of the other board members have questions? I'll get to you, Steve, in a minute.
I have a question. On, this would be probably to our attorney. I don't know if the communications to the seven units was involved at all. Or could we say that they should be involved to know about this T-shirt and different things, just to make us know that we have covered everything? I mean, maybe the seven units haven't even been touched and they they're not even aware of it.
It certainly would be appropriate to send notices to the tenants if necessary, but it is the owner's responsibility to take care of it. And he's he's certainly the first line of defense. If this goes further and he's in violation, you always have your ultimate authority of disconnecting somebody from the sewer system, in which case they'd all get notice that your property is going to be disconnected based on your failure to follow district regulations. You know, that's pretty draconian penalty, but you know, we can't have people that continually have sewer spills. And that is a remedy we have. So that that is still a remedy that's available down the road if if we need it.
Okay. I just feel in fairness, the seven units should be in. Okay.
Do any of the other directors have questions?
I have a, I have a question, Bob.
Go ahead, Art.
And Nolani, when is the deadline date for applying this amount to the tax bill? You happen to know?
I believe that's a finance question.
Pardon me?
I believe that's a finance question to respond to.
It's actually August tenth, it's actually August tenth. Yeah, August tenth is the deadline. So we're going to miss it this time. We're not going to miss getting paid, but we'll just have to wait for another year to get it on the tax roll.
I was just thinking, do we want to give him an option to pay it after this, if if that's what we decide to do?
Well, that will be, there'll be a notice to him. He'd get a copy of the resolution if the board were to confirm these charges, he would get that resolution. And then I assume Scott would send a cover letter saying this is, you know, an opportunity for you to avoid it being placed on the tax roll.
Right. Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Um, well, I have a couple of questions. How how did C R and R get there for the the first incident in February? Did, did, who who called them out?
I don't know who called them out. But again, it was after hours. So they got the call eleven thirty P M. And so there are after hours. I don't know who called them. But they got the call at eleven thirty P M. So that's, that's what we hired them to do.
Somebody knew there was a sewer spill and or assumed there was a sewer spill and called them out. You know, I I don't think Mr. Bedford's has any, I haven't heard anything related to who, what sewer professional, you know, gave him the advice, you know, that the Costa Mesa sanitary district main line was the issue. In fact, when when C R and R looked down there, although it's in the middle of the night, they they could see where the watering on the mantle was, if in fact, you know, the the water had 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 been higher earlier in the day, some other time. There there was an issue with, at least in in the staff report about what caused C R and R, you know, not to follow up with the first incident. It said, you know, they 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 had to go, they had other business. So you, I I'm not sure why that was in the staff report. So what's that? And what's the importance of that?
Are you talking about the two thousand and fifteen sewer spill?
No, I'm talking about the the two currents ones, the first one that was attended by C R and R in the middle of the night, or C R in the middle of the night. And you know, there was a line, a sentence in that paragraph that said they they did not follow up, they used the word abatement. Some, someone who wrote the report used the word abatement. It was obviously clear when they left, but somebody, somebody, whoever wrote that staff report, expected more.
I don't know what you're referring to. I'm sorry.
Well, let me read you the, let me read you the paragraph then. They cleaned the lateral. Oh, yeah, it said, Mr. Bedford believes the assessment is right because district staff did not continue to proceed trying to abate the condition of the lateral. You know, it went on, said, you know, they they overlooked following up abatement conditions due to the, due to pressing issues. So what is Mr. Bedford talking about?
He's, he says he believes that his his assessment is correct because we did not continue pressing the issue. We just kind of went away after the two thousand and fifteen because I said earlier we had other issues. We dropped the ball. We had other issues. We had to contend, and we just forgot about it. But in his mind, because we didn't continue pressing the issue, he thinks were that he was right.
Okay. And and in fact, there was, there was another incident two days later.
Yes.
So the main line was flowing, his lateral was flowing to the main line when C R drains left in the middle of the night. And then two days later, it was clogged up again.
Correct.
I, some, Scott, you you made reference to those little pump shredding things. And in fact, no, I don't think that's possible. You know, any, any, anything like a rag that comes through there is more likely to clog them than to get shredded. But those little pumps are not shredders, and it's not material to this process. But I, you know, I think Mark's explanation was was good in that by the time it gets close to our main line, it slopes down to the main line. In fact, I would have hoped that his diagram showed that the reason for the pump was because it 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 had to go up to get there. And and he did refer to Mr. Hillerman and he gave absolutely nothing to the district to make us believe that other than the supposition that the main line was the problem. You know, I think that's idiotic thinking. Anyway, are there any other questions from directors?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was wondering our attorney, if you could walk us through what are options on this? And then after that, if we have an option to also go ahead with a resolution at this meeting to start it?
Your option today would be to determine whether or not to confirm the charges, determine that we acted appropriately and fixing the problem and the charges are reasonable, or determine that they were not. Or something in between those two ranges. And then you would direct me to bring back a resolution which would memorialize your findings and the some of the thoughts you've expressed. And I would put that into a resolution, and we would make it formalized, formalized findings. And we would send that to the and we would uh, send that to the uh, owner. Uh, and Mr. Carol would uh, give a cover letter saying we, the board denied the continuance and went forward with the hearing. And here's the determination, we would have, we have an administrative record, everything produced is in the administrative record now. And he would probably have ninety days to challenge that if he wanted to. But it's an expensive proceeding to challenge, and you know, he'd have to do it in ninety days, but uh, this is a thirteen hundred dollar bill. Would probably cost ten thousand dollars to file that lawsuit and pursue it, but that's his choice. And then after that, the decision is final after the ninety days, and, oh, actually, the decision's final, but it can be challenged for ninety days. And then we'll put it on the tax roll for the next, the next time. And there'll actually be a little mini-hearing on that, but you won't have to go through the evidence again, it's just his chance to uh, you know, object to it going on his property. But you don't have to go through the evidence again, you've already done that, he had a chance, and if you determine uh, to uh, confirm the charges, then he uh, did not avail himself of his due process rights to contest that in this hearing.
Now, do you give the uh, numbers that the resolution would be now, or do you wait till?
No, we, we, we play, that will come back before you, uh, in your, maybe your next meeting, we'll have you confirm that resolution, and the President Secretary will sign it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Director Echols.
Just a follow-up uh, to Alan, uh, Alan, if we, or could we vote today uh, to basically uh, assess, i- if, give the owner an option to pay within sixty days of notice? The, again, the, the fee that uh, Scott had sent him, say again, eleven hundred dollars, and pay, if he pays that within sixty days, great, no fees, no uh, penalties. Or, we're gonna, we're gonna assess a thirteen hundred fees, penalties, blah, blah, and put it on the tax roll, is that an option we could take today?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make it work in the resolution, I haven't figured that out, but yes, that's certainly an option you can do today.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Steve, you, you had your hand up earlier and I skipped you, do you remember what we were talking about?
No problem, I just wanted to add something, it was during uh, Mark's uh, diagram picture. I just wanted to add that uh, when we do get calls for um, possible spills or backups, this is during working hours or even after hours. First thing we do is check our line to make sure that, you know, it's not our issue.
Yeah.
Uh, because if it is our issue, that's, for like after hours, um, CNR will call me and they'll send our truck out there to relieve the obstruction in our line. So I just wanted to state that, that's the first thing they do when they respond to all possible backups.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could ask Steve, Steve, could you uh, identify uh, your position with the district and your uh, credentials?
Uh, Waste Water Maintenance Superintendent for Costa Mesa Sanitary District, uh, grade four collections, grade one environmental, uh, I got a distribution D two, I got a T two, NASCO certified, I serve on a CWA, I serve on SARS.
Thank you.
Do any of the directors uh, have, have any more discussion, or?
Yeah, Bob, this, Mike, um, two things, can we? When we do all this action, I want to make it clear that we're only doing it with Mr. Bedford. Um, I know Arlene had mentioned the tenants, and I had mentioned the tenants also, we uh, what interaction, at this point, we're just dealing with Mr. Bedford. The tenants have nothing to do with any of this, is that correct, Alan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, I think we need to be careful when we go forward with anything. Unless we're shutting it off, then I can see us notifying the tenants. But I think it's up to Mr. Bedford to be more proactive with his tenants. You know, and if he needs our help giving them information, I think the district is more than willing to do that. But in terms of this action, the tenants have nothing to do with it. So, and then my final comment, or my next comment, I don't know if it'll be my final, because I don't know when to stop talking. Um, I, I, I understand what Director Echols is saying, and giving him a chance to only pay the fees. But at this point, I'm more inclined to want to include the, the, the penalties and stuff simply because Mr. Bedford has not been cooperative in getting us the information. He is costing more staff time, more staff expense, and I think he needs to be responsible for that, so by just giving him the bill for what the cleanup cost, um, I, I don't, I'm not sure that's appropriate in my way of thinking, so, that's all.
M- Mr. President?
Director Echols.
Just as a follow-up, I don't disagree with Vice President Schaefer, I was just looking for a way for the district to recoup the costs within sixty days, that, you know, somewhere quick, instead of waiting for another year to go through a tax roll, I, I was just looking for a quick way out, so that, you know, I, I don't disagree with Vice President Schaefer at all, but um, just trying to expedite payment somehow.
Yeah, and, and I think the idea of, of giving him sixty days is reasonable. Um, if it were me, I'd only give him thirty days, because in insurance law, we only have to give you thirty days, but uh, I, I'm okay with, if, if, you know, my gut feeling is this is gonna be on the tax roll next year, I don't think he's gonna, no matter what we bill him, I'm not sure that he's gonna pay it, and that's his right to, to challenge, so I, I don't have a problem with that.
Got it.
President Newton, I, I agree with Mike's statement, I think we should assess him the max based on his inactivity with us, and that would be my suggestion also.
Okay, do we, do we have a motion from one of the directors?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move, I'll move, I'm sorry, I'll move that, um, the general manager moved forward with uh, first of all, informing the Mr. Bedford that there was no continuance of the matter, and that the matter has been brought to our board this morning. And I'll move that we uh, assess him the, the charges plus the interest, and I, and I apologize, Scott, I don't have the the exact number, but you do, and so I would move that we assess him, but that we do give him an option to uh, to make the, the payment within sixty days, otherwise it'll be on the, the, the most available tax roll.
And that confirming resolution be brought back for your uh, approval.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Now, hey, Alan, do we have to close the public hearing first, before we do that action?
Yes, and once you close your public hearing, uh, then you cannot introduce any new facts or ask any questions that would produce new facts, so uh, be sure you're done asking those questions.
Now, did we see if the owner of the property is online with us at all? I'm just curious, he probably is not, but I thought we should check. Is that, you know, he has a owner's presentation, which I'm not sure he's gonna make.
I do not see him in the meeting, sir.
Okay, just double checking.
Um, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, any abstentions, um, I think we can move on with this item.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys, girls, everyone.
Our attorney, Bob?
Um, I can't see the agenda, but if, if, if that's, if that's, we, do we need to close the public hearing, Alan?
Uh, well, you've already acted, so it's fine, you had your public hearing and you never closed it, it's okay, doesn't affect anything.
So what happens with the resolution?
The resol, the resolution comes back to you, you'll see it on a future agenda.
Okay, so we directed you?
You directed me to prepare that resolution, memorializing your decision, it will come back.
Okay, if it's appropriate, uh, this, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Hey, Scott, real quick.